...the city council meeting to order. Welcome everyone here. If you would all please rise and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Phyllis, would we have roll call, please?
Craig Koshaw.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Fulenkamp.
Tyler Fulenkamp.
Here.
Scott Murray.
Here.
Wiley Surt.
Here. Thank you. You all emailed a copy of our minutes from our November 21st meeting. If I could have a motion to approve those minutes or change them if they need be?
So moved.
Second. So moved and second and to approve the minutes from November 21st. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Thank you. Okay. First thing we have to do tonight on the agenda, because it was advertised for 7:30, is to have a public hearing to introduce an ordinance to annex a parcel of land that's being purchased by the Bank of Geneva. So, Tim, I need to have a motion to suspend the council meeting and open a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to suspend council meeting for an open hearing.
Second. Have a motion and a second to suspend the council meeting and to open a public hearing for comments on annexing the Bank of Geneva. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Okay. We are now in a public hearing. Tim?
Please have a proof of publication.
Yep. Yes. We have a proof of publication for this public hearing. If I could make that a matter of record? So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to make this a matter of record. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you, Phyllis. Are there any comments, Tim, that you would like to make on this during the public hearing portion?
Yeah. We passed out the fiscal plan that were required by statute to develop regarding an area to be annexed into the city. In the past, we did, we hired this out by, to be paid for by, or done by a consultant. Kristi Sturges did the last couple, but frankly, the charge was about $8,000 each time and we were reimbursed by the county and the hospital. Those are the two annexations that I'm talking about. In this case, it's a little different because in that case, the reason reimbursement was given is we received no benefit from the annexation. It was going to cost us to do the fiscal impact study, so in this case, we do ultimately derive some benefit from annexing this property. The property I'm referring to is three lots out on, along US 27, just south of County Road 500 North and adjoining US 27 to the east. The city owns the property to the west of these three lots as well as to the south of the southernmost lot. And the property has been purchased by Bank of Geneva. They're planning on constructing a new bank at that location. There may be enough room for a possible additional commercial use on part of that property. I will point out one thing. When the request for annexation was filed with the city, there was a fourth lot and that was a vacant property just to the west of these three lots. Subsequent to that request being made, it was determined that that property is already in the city. So for purposes of the annexation and for purposes of the fiscal plan, the only properties that we talk about are the three lots that are immediately adjacent to US 27.
But the Geneva Bank will own that fourth lot that you're talking about?
Yes.
They do own that.
And it also raised an interesting question with regard to who has jurisdiction to approve the site plans for the development. Originally, we envisioned that the county plan commission would give site plan approval because this property is still in the county and annexation, if it goes forward, would not be completed until latter part of January. And the bank is anxious to get it started with construction. They want to do it in December, start in December. If we wait until we complete the annexation early, we could take action on site plan approval would be February. The county contacted us, indicated that they would prefer to relinquish jurisdiction and allow the city to move forward with taking jurisdiction because of the pending annexation. We talked to the building planning department. They concurred with that request and so the matter is now going to be brought before the city planning commission for site plan review and approval. The building permit will be issued by the city Decatur and inspections will be done by HUD.
So Geneva Bank does own the property right now, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So, the fiscal study that's done is to determine what impact this will have in terms of additional costs to the city and what potential impact it may have with regard to additional revenues. And so it goes through and looks at the three properties. You have to determine first that there is a need for annexation. Obviously, the bank is requesting it. This is a super voluntary annexation because it's 100% ownership, it's requesting the annexation. If this were something that the city were annexing in territory, it'd be an entirely different process than we would be going through. This is, even though it takes two to three months to complete it, even for a super voluntary annexation, it's by far the easier method to follow. The state requires, the state law requires that each of the properties have at least one-eighth contiguous adjoining property to the municipality or the existing boundaries of the municipality. In this case, each of the three parcels have at least 24% contiguity, so it meets that criteria. The second criteria is the need for annexation. The bank is requesting it. Obviously, it's to the bank's benefit because they will rely upon city services such as water and sewer, as well as fire protection, police protection, and they're desirous of that type of service being provided. And it avoids them paying the out-of-city rates for certain of those services.
And at that location, there's nothing we need to upgrade, correct?
We'll get to that, but yes, you're correct. In terms of the surrounding area, obviously, the city's grown around that already. Its municipal limits are to the east of this property, to the north, and even to the south and west. So it's kind of one of these pocket areas. If we don't annex it, you're going to be isolated with a county property right in the middle of the city. And then it meets all of the criteria and it will lend itself to economic growth, which is desirous to the community. With regard to municipal services and the impact it may have, I talked to various bodies or departments within the city regarding what impact it may have. When I talked to Greg at the police department, he anticipated that the number of runs to the location would be similar to that which was indicated for the new jail, which is three calls. He estimated that that call would have an average cost of $150 per call, so the impact would be $450 annually. It wouldn't require any capital upgrades or equipment or manpower upgrades, so there's no capital costs involved. With regard to the fire department, I talked to Tim Baumann at the fire department. Les was on, so Tim answered my question. But basically, he anticipated that, again, it would be similar to the jail, would require maybe two calls a year. There's a state farm marshal fee schedule that you work with to determine what annual cost would be. That's $850 per run, two times that is $1,700. Again, it wouldn't require capital cost increases, so that would be the total cost related to the fire department. With regard to streets, there's no additional street improvements that would be necessary. There may be a private drive, but that would be maintained by the bank itself. There's no capital cost or an estimated annual cost for that. Parking wreck, same thing. No capital cost or estimated annual cost. With regard to water services, the annual cost to the Bank of Geneva, we don't have to run any new infrastructure to this. The water service should be readily available, so there's no capital cost. Annual revenue could be expected at about $189 annually, and that's based on, you know, water services that were estimated for this facility. If they paid an out-of-state, or I mean, out-of-count, out-of-city rate, it would be $217 annually. So there's a $28 annual savings to the bank. For sanitary sewers, revenue would be generated at about $350 annually. And that is, it would be savings to the bank of about $180. There's no capital cost or estimated annual cost for that service. Again, services are readily available to that site. Same thing with stormwater sewers. The estimated annual revenue to the city would be $230, but there's no capital cost or estimated annual cost related to that. Administrative services, the city's not going to have to increase its personnel to administer this territory once it's annexed. Liability for township debt remains, if there is any. There's none in this case, so there's no impact there. And there wouldn't be hiring of governmental employees displaced by annexation, so there's no cost there. Then if you look at tax revenues, you break that down in terms of what the rate is. There are certain assumptions that are made, but the assumption is that the construction will start in 2018, will be completed by December 31st of 2018. Full assessment would occur January 1st of 2019, payable in 2020. So the first time that the city would recognize any revenue from property taxes would not occur until 2020. That's estimated to be somewhere around $4,419 if you net out the expenses that the city will incur as well, and factor in any revenues generated by water, sewer, stormwater. Starting in 2020, the city will net probably somewhere in the neighborhood of $3,438 each year. So for five years, it would net about $8,842. The recommendation based on fiscal plan is that it meets state law requirements. It shows that it's advantageous to the city to annex a property, and so the recommendation based on the fiscal plan is that the annexation be approved. The annexation fiscal plan gives specific legal descriptions for each of the lots as well as the parcel numbers, which again is a requirement of state law. So that's the nature of fiscal plan. That's something that is discussed in the public hearing. The public hearing is also made available for any people within the general public to make comments pro or con, and at this time, they would be given that opportunity.
Any comments from the public or from council?
Just appreciate the Bank of Geneva's confidence indicator.
Very much so.
Yep. And understand their need to want city services.
And willing to expand and, you know, what, have they been there in the shopping center for what, three, four years, maybe?
Maybe.
Yeah, yeah. So that their willingness to expand beyond that.
I appreciate their effort to be, help us with our fringe issue.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Tim, if the resolution comes out before we close the public hearing?
Yeah. If there's no public comment, then there'd be a motion to close the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting with council. And at that point, we'll consider first a resolution to approve the fiscal plan that I just went over. The second would then be to introduce the next ordinance that would be the annexation ordinance. That would be introduced and acted upon on two readings tonight. Tabled for third and final reading for your next meeting. By statute, you have to wait at least two weeks after the public hearing before final adoption can take place. Once final adoption occurs with regard to the ordinance adoption, then there is a 30-day period that we have to wait for any possible appeal of the annexation. If there's none filed with the circuit court, then at that point, we record the annexation ordinance and annexation is completed.
Seeing no additional comments in the public meeting, I make a motion to
Close.
...close the public meeting.
And?
And reconvene.
Reconvene. I thought we did that two separately. We do it in one motion?
You can do it in one.
Okay. And reconvene the
Council meeting.
Council meeting.
Same. Thank you. I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing and reconvene our city council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you. So the next thing we have would be, we're looking for a motion to introduce a resolution to approve the fiscal plan for the annexation of the Bank of Geneva.
What resolution number is this?
16.
16? I'll make a motion to introduce Resolution 2017-16 by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and two seconds to introduce Resolution 2017-16 by short title only. Tim? Oh, excuse me. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you. Tim?
Resolution number 2017-16, short title, "Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which sets forth policy in the city in regard to the Bank of Geneva property annexation."
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution 2017-16.
Seconds. Motion and a second to pass Resolution 2017-16. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you. And then I would be looking for a motion to introduce ordinance number, Phyllis? Ordinance number 2017-17.
Okay. I'll make a motion to play, I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2017-17 on its first reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance 2017-17 on its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Tim?
Ordinance number 2017-17, short title, "An Ordnance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which annexes certain territories to the city of Decatur, Indiana, commonly known as the Bank of Geneva property annexation."
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2017-17 on its first reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance 2017-17 in its first reading. I'd have roll call vote, Phyllis.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Wiley Surt.
Yes. I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2017-17 on its second reading by short title only.
Second. Motion and a second to place ordinance 2017-17 in the second reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you. Tim?
Ordinance number 2017-17, short title, "An Ordnance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which annexes certain territories to the city of Decatur, Indiana, commonly known as the Bank of Geneva property annexation."
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2017-17 on its second reading.
Thanks. Motion and a second to pass ordinance number 2017-17 in its second reading would have roll call vote, Phyllis.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Wiley Surt.
Yeah. I'll now make a motion to table ordinance 2017-17 for our next meeting
19th.
December 19th.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second to table ordinance 2017-17 for its third reading on our, at our next council meeting on December 19th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you. Thank you all for your patience. Next, we'll go ahead and talk about the utility ordinance that we discussed at the last meeting. First of all, I want to, when I'm wrong, admit that I'm wrong, and I was wrong on something that I said at the last meeting, and that was, I had ordinances from some other municipalities that I said only allowed accounts in the owner's name. And in the paragraph where I read that, that is what it said. But if you keep reading deeper into their ordinances, then it does state that the account could be put in the owner or the tenant's name. And that included Burn, Columbia City, and one other one. Geneva? One Geneva?
Auburn.
We already knew about Auburn. One, New Haven was the other one. So I stand corrected on that and apologize if I made that statement. Having said that, I want to just kind of read a little synopsis of where we've been, where we are, and where we want to go with all of this. So if I could. In reference to ordinance 2017-15, we introduced this ordinance back on November 7th and passed it on its first and second readings. The third reading was tabled with the thought of allowing rental property owners the benefit of voicing their concerns at our next meeting. At the November 21st meeting, a sizable turnout of concerned citizen property owners attended the council meeting to express their thoughts. Council members and utility director Kevin Hackman took away a good bit of information from that meeting, noting that the majority of the property owners understand the city's concern in reference to bad debt that we write off each year. They too would like to see a solution to having the high number of tenants that move out of the rental properties with unpaid balances, leaving the city with thousands of dollars of uncollected debt annually. Suggestions from the property owners at the November 21st meeting included that the city might consider starting to take deposits, sending duplicate bills to the property owners with a possible service fee, and notification to the property owners prior to having water service shut off. All of that in addition to allowing the account to remain in the tenant's name, ultimately with the property owner being the sole responsible party. Following all discussion that evening, after about an hour, a motion to table the third reading of ordinance 2015 was made, seconded and unanimously passed. The past two weeks, Kevin Hackman, who can't be here this evening, he's actually attending a utility conference down in southern Indiana. The past two weeks, Kevin Hackman, utility director for the city, has been busy working with our software provider in an effort to see if any of the optional suggestions that were made at our last meeting might be possible. We're even looking to see what costs might be associated to changing to a different software. However, tonight, I don't have enough information to say what we can and cannot do. We just haven't had enough time. After discussing where we are in the situation, my recommendation this evening to council would be to table this ordinance again this evening and allow Kevin the opportunity and his, and the girls that work for him, to investigate what options we might have in the future so that we can work with all of you. Ultimately, I also suggest that we not pass the original ordinance, and I've discussed this with the council members via email. I suggest that we not pass the original ordinance as it's written and that we modify and introduce a new ordinance that will give rental property owners the option to allow accounts to be in either the tenant or the owner's name, whichever they prefer, with the bottom line being that the property owner will be reasonable, will be responsible for any unpaid balances and that water service will be shut off until any bad debt is settled after a certain period of time. I would also propose we delay making the revised ordinance effective until the first of March 2018, where we were, originally, we're going to do this the first of January, so delays it a few months. While we may introduce the modified ordinance at our next meeting, two weeks from this evening, for its first and second reading, we wouldn't actually pass that ordinance until the first meeting in January. By delaying it until March, it will give the city ample time to gather any other information on what we can do to help make the transition easier. In addition, by waiting a couple of months, it allows all the property owners, and especially, I spoke with Kim back here from Belmont Estates, the time to consider how they wish to keep their rental property accounts with the city. I know she needs to do some work with HUD to make things work out, and I don't want to pass something and play favorites here, so that's another good reason to delay it for a couple of months. Yep. Having said all of this, knowing what we do now, okay, this evening, I prefer, I prefer only to hear any comments from the public that you really deem necessary this evening. And there may be some of them, okay? I just don't want to get into an hour-long shouting match back and forth and not have anything settled. I think there was a lot of good, good comments made at the last meeting. We've had some of you email us with suggestions, and I've talked to a few of you on the phone or face to face, and so if any of you have any comments, I welcome them, but really, you know, I think we've heard the majority of what we need, and I think we want to work with you all. So now I'll open the floor for anyone that feels they need to make a comment or have a question, and after we have your comments, then I'll have comments from the council members and hopefully a little discussion here among them, and we'll go from there. But like I said, I don't think we're ready to pass the ordinance as it was written this evening. Any comments out here?
I have one. Sorry, Marshall. Go ahead.
State your name also as you make the comments for the minutes' records.
My name's Jeremy Myers.
Yep.
If you have a lease, if a legally binding contract with that tenant, and maybe you can, the city attorney can answer this question, but you, as I understand, you cannot change that lease. In other words, if there's 10 months left on the lease, and then you guys want us to be responsible for the water, we can't go in and say, well, now you have to pay us for that. There's a lease there, and that can't be raised in that amount of time, in that 12-month time. So what I guess I'm saying is, is some of this is probably going to have to be grandfathered in until some of these leases are, have ran their course.
To answer your question, Jeremy, the city's not party to the lease. The lease is binding between the landlord and the tenant, so it's certainly enforceable by the landlord to collect from the tenant as the lease requires of the tenant. The city's not a party to the contract. The city's not bound by that. It's no different than if somebody goes through a dissolution of a marriage and the court says that this party is responsible for paying the mortgage, okay? That's binding between the parties, but it's not binding on the bank. If the bank had an agreement with that, those two people, that they're both responsible, the bank can pursue either one of them. So regardless of what the court order says, it doesn't, it's not binding on the bank because the bank's not a party to that lawsuit. It's the same thing here. The city's not a party to the lease agreement that you enter into with your tenant. So while I understand what you're saying, the city has the ability to require you to pay it if it's not shut off, or if it's shut off and there's a bill to be paid. It's incumbent upon you, obviously, to make sure that your tenant's paying the bill so that you don't get stuck with that. And I understand that could happen.
I don't think that's the question I'm asking. The question I'm asking is, is I can't legally go collect that from them if I'm in a contract with them for, let's say, another 10 months at the said, or signed or agreed upon amount.
Nothing, they wouldn't go on for 10 months.
If they're, if you're saying that your lease agreement with them is that they're responsible for utilities, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Your obligation is just to make sure that they're paying that bill. If they don't, you could be on the hook. So it's incumbent upon you to make sure that they're coming to the city and paying the bill as they agreed to under your lease.
And we hope to be able to work with you to help notify you of those things.
I have another question then. Why, why can't the city be responsible for collecting its own money from the people that they're providing it to?
We've tried. That's why we write off about $25,000 a year.
I understand, but there's been, Kim even said last, the last meeting, that she, as many credit checks as she does, the city of Decatur has never been on any credit check that she's had come back. It's like you guys don't, it's almost like you guys are wanting us to be responsible for what you should be responsible for because you're the one supplying.
Not at all.
And, yeah, it is, actually.
Well, we certainly can look into what the collection agency is doing in terms of pursuing that. I mean, that's something, obviously, that we can look into to see what they're actually doing to try to collect the debt, but that's why it's assigned over to them. We don't have the manpower to do it ourselves.
That is something that definitely, definitely need to look into, though. I do wonder at the credit checks every year and literally have not I do plunder the credit checks every year and literally have not ever seen one from say Decatur, an interesting case. And working with your office over this last week, we've collected a lot of money. Everybody should be pretty happy. But an interesting scenario was a resident who lived out there actually put it in somebody else's name, which was not uncommon for some time. But I moved in in May, they actually owed bills to you of $1,100, did not show up on the credit report when I moved in in May. So something is going on with your collection agency, you may need to change because literally I do hundreds of credit checks every year and not once, because I'm there.
And that's, it's good to know, so we'll definitely look into that.
Yeah, and that's a big deal. But we're a little bit on our own. No, we'll see, we're happy for Belmont there today.
Jared.
Jerry Selfman. And a question in regards to, does the city have a policy as to if water does absolutely get shut off after it's delinquent by so many months?
Yeah.
Do you hear of that policy?
There, there, we're bound by giving notice and we're trying to expedite how quickly we can actually do that legally.
We're trying to, we're hopefully going to be able to speed it up for you guys.
One of the things, right now, if you look at how the billing is done, it covers a period, the billing comes after a certain period. So you've got a billing cycle here, the bill gets sent out a week later and it's due two weeks after that, okay? So by the time that bill is delinquent, you've almost had 60 days worth of water service that still hasn't been paid. So now we get to a second bill and if that bill doesn't get paid, then we send out a notice to disconnect and we have to give at least 10 days notice in order to do that. So oftentimes, you're near three months by the time you could get to that point. So one of the things that we're looking to do is try to figure out if we can shorten the period. And what we may end up doing is with the very next statement that goes out, we're going to give a notice to disconnect service and give 20 days if, to owners, you have to give 20 days notice. So it'll say 20 days from that date of that notice, it's going to be shut off unless somebody comes in and pays that bill.
Could save about 30 days.
Right. So it'll speed up the process, but by law, we can't just go in and shut it off if they don't pay it the day after it's due.
Speeding up that process would be dramatically helpful though.
Yeah, and we're looking at how we can do that.
Yep.
Yeah, and our, and we literally, when I got the phone call and went through all this, within an hour, I was on the phone with my attorney, me and the district attorney.
When I made the statement that Kevin and his staff and I have all been working on this the past two weeks, I hope you believe me, we have been. And when I made the statement that we want to work with you and try to make this work out the best we can, okay, in the best interest of everyone, I hope you believe me because we do. Jared.
Yeah, the other question I have is, does the city maintain a database of those past due?
I have it. Yep, sure do.
If we have an application for rental, if we could call the city, they could find out what they have past due, what are those numbers?
Mm-hmm.
That would be a big help. I don't know if they're legally, if you can release that information. We could always have.
I don't know if we can or not, but I'd be glad to give it to you if I can.
We could have a release of, that our application, a release sign off.
Yeah, there's, there's certain privacy issues that we do have to deal with.
Over 800 names on it.
Well, one of the things we're looking into is what can we provide that would make it more readily available for you all to check out?
Does it have a paper sign that they will, for the applicant to release that information?
If you, if you and your lease agreement would include a clause that basically says they specifically authorize you to verify payment of, then clearly that would give you the legal authority to check.
Well, Nitsco even has that on their website, if AEP have it, landlord for the third-party verification and even the shut-off notice that we can have them sign and move in.
Yeah. I mean, if we, if you provide us with something signed by your tenant that says that you have authority to access, we can do that.
But if you guys could come up with a standard form that all of us landlords could use, like AEP and Nitsco, I have the forms.
Sure.
Reword it and put it on your stationery. I mean, just, just one more authority figure that says, okay, look.
Yeah, one of the things, one of the things that we're probably going to implement to accommodate keeping you having the right to put this in the name of a tenant is to have something actually signed, one by you authorizing the tenant to put it in the tenant's name with the understanding that you know you're ultimately liable. And secondly, we want contact information from, for you as well as the tenant. And third, probably something that we could incorporate in that that would specifically allow the city to release that information to the landlord. And then that way, it solves that problem.
Well, I can forward Kathy's evidence to you guys too because they do, they say everything that you deserve.
Please do, yeah. Gary, what's your name, young man?
Uh, Gary Myers. Not young. I have to apologize for what I say here because I wasn't here the last meeting. And I know this has been talked about before, but I'm assuming that the city of Decatur has a water department that's a multimillion dollar business. Am I correct?
Oh, about multimillion.
I don't know about multimillion, but it's probably a couple million.
Let's call it, let's, well, multi.
Yeah, I understand.
More than one. Every utility that I know of, and you know where I'm going with this, collects a deposit after a credit check.
Yep.
And I realize from what Ken said that you're looking into that. But from, if you were in our shoes, sitting here looking at you guys, you would have perhaps a different opinion of what's going on now in that the burden is getting thrown toward us when we are not the people that are turning on the water to uncreditworthy individuals.
We're not the ones leasing the apartment to the uncreditworthy individuals.
But my point is, and that, that's, that's, that's true too, but you have certain standards that you can't discriminate against. You set that, that score, if you want to use a credit score, you set that, and then they can be falling off of, off of a ledge and go drop below that in a, within a short, very short time. We make a decision from the information that we have at hand and it just, if you guys could cooperate with what you said, Ken, about a deposit, looking into this and then acting on it, making us ultimately responsible for somebody else's bill is not really what I would consider good business.
I had a conversation with Kevin on this issue and he had checked with the state on a deposit. And he said, because we are a government entity, we're not like AEP or a lot, not like Nitsco, if we charge a deposit, then we have to charge a deposit to everyone in Decatur. So that means someone that's been paying their bill for 30 years, we have to go to them and say, these rental people aren't paying theirs, we're going to need a $300 deposit from you. To me, or the people in my district, that doesn't seem fair.
For a new one, though, you don't have to.
I think it was in the whole, you can't discriminate against anybody.
Wasn't there another comment about the state board of accounts? I mean, how are we going to account for that cash on deposits? Because, isn't that right?
Yeah. We, we talked to a number of other communities and some of them had tried the deposit, it was an administrative nightmare for them. They recommended that we not do it.
And some do take deposits.
I understand, Jared, and I'm going back to that. Some do take them, but it's not discriminating, correct?
No, what, I think what, what Tyler's saying, I, I wouldn't privy to the conversation that Kevin had with the state board of accounts, but if I understood, what he was told is you have to do it uniformly. So if you've got a thousand ratepayers, every ratepayer pays the deposit. It's not tied to just tenants.
Every one of us is going to have to now make a deposit, even though we've been in good credit standing with the city for a long, long, long time.
But I mean, and how is, like, in Bola?
They've been doing it for a long time. Taking deposits.
Just, just for renters and rent contractors.
Oh, they only take it for just them?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know. Something more we can look at, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, that's.
It is, if that's the case.
I, I can call AEP and I can get an electric bill in my name, I've never had a deposit in my life. But if I have a tenant move in, they have to have a deposit. Or at least with Nitsco, I shouldn't say AEP, with Nitsco. And it's because I have a reputation of, or whatever, but, and they don't, okay? So on new tenants that are going to be moving in, if you don't have any kind of credit on them or whatever, you know, I, I don't think that would be discriminating as far as getting a deposit.
What was your name?
Marshall Zimmerman.
Okay.
You know, and it's like, if, I know that you guys say you're not in a business, but you're, you're providing a service and you're, you're collecting sales tax and you, and you give them the service. If they don't get that service, they're going to, they're going to come up with the money. But if somehow you have to shorten that, like you were talking, shorten that span. I mean, to me, if I'm going to be responsible, I'm, you know, and, and another question I want to have too, or I guess I have two. First of all, is it legal to, to charge somebody a?
It's a, it's a service to the property. Who gets billed is.
We, we don't, I'm not saying turn the water on, leave the water off.
Yeah, we would.
If that property owner wants water, let him call you and put it in his name, it's not coming to me. He's the one, the end user is him, not me.
Right.
So I'm in question, number one, whether it's legal, okay? And I know that you're going to say that it is, but just because it passes doesn't necessarily make that it is. I don't know, I'm, I'm not an attorney, I'm just, I'm just saying how I feel. And, and the other thing is, if it does pass, where is the cutoff date where I'm going to be responsible? Are you going to go back three years and say, hey, that guy lived in here, he?
No.
It is going to take effect from?
It's going to be.
Moving forward. Next year, we're going to write off probably $25,000 and the year after, another 25. What we wrote, what, what, what we wrote off this year was five-year-old debt. We'll do the same thing for the next four years, okay? And then after that, hopefully we'll be writing off.
What kind of revenue do you usually take in a year?
I don't know, but whatever we take in goes toward infrastructure repairs. I don't know if you know it, but you know, we're looking at a brand-new water facility. You know, our, the water plant that's where we at here, over here by Riverside Center is, how old is it? 80 years old, something like that? And our new water plant, which is out by Ryden Boss, is like 50 years old. They're both old. This one out here is, this one over here is not efficient any longer. The well field that we're using to supply it is not efficient any longer. And we are very close to doing a rate study and most likely in the next couple of years because we will be building a new water plant, getting water from new well fields, and even having to repair our line that runs from Burn to Decatur, the infrastructure of those water lines. There's going to be a water rate increase spread evenly among all of us. And that's not uncommon, folks. I mean, the infrastructure is very old and it doesn't last forever. So when you say, how much money are we making? Well, what we do make, it's not like we party on it.
Well, I'm just, I'm just looking at, if you take in $40 million, you know, and I'm not, I, I think people should pay their bills. I'm just throwing that out there. I mean, I don't, you know, but I, I think people should pay their bills, but they're going to, they're going to be a lot more apt to pay if they get their water shut off.
I agree.
And they get it shut off sooner, so it's a shortcut.
And when the people are still living there and the water gets shut off, they generally run right up here and get it paid, so they have water. It's the ones that move out. Those are, that's the problem, that's the problem child.
Okay. Then it falls back to me, I guess, I mean, it sounds like, you know, a deposit is the answer, but just, I mean, I don't, I don't understand why it's a big accounting issue, but to me it's, I don't know, I'm not a computer guy, but it looks like a bunch of computers, you got to deposit, you know, I don't know.
Well, you're all entitled to your opinions, trust me, you all are, and I value your opinions. But when you're on this side of the desk and working things as a municipality, unfortunately, it's a little different than working as a private business owner. It really is.
Well, that's one comment I just want to address. I mean, you said it's a multimillion dollar business, but there's no profits that are going into savings.
Why do you think there was?
It's all in multimillion dollars. But it's all going back into infrastructure.
And that's, and that's, as it should be. I don't, and I realize you're not making a party or doing a party. I, I never, never even thought that you were having a party.
What was your question?
But you're paying your bills.
Right, but because we're getting stuck with 25,000, I mean, it may be small amount, but then that means that the people that are paying their bill, their price has to go up to cover that and I don't think it's fair to the majority that the minority is not paying and the majority has to pick it up. I just don't think it's fair.
But then you don't want to, it's not fair to this minority either.
I have a rental, I have rental properties too and I ran in the same situation in other communities.
Well, I'm not arguing that this is, this is, this is chasing a down rattle from this part. No, no parties, never, never thought you were having a party. I know you have to maintain.
I understand that.
The, the system, that's, that's all. I'm just talking about getting stuck with somebody else's bill and you guys wouldn't feel good if.
I, what I was trying to say is, I've been on your end, I've got stuck with other people's bill and believe me, it's not fun. I mean, it's, it's not, but I'm on the other side of the table today, getting stuck on the other side and it's not fun to get stuck over here either. So, I mean, you have to do something to stop getting stuck is what we're looking to do.
One last comment, Jared.
I didn't know, one last comment, if I can just get an ID, if I could provide an ID.
We get it. We do get an ID now?
Yeah. So they're switching their kid, Ryan.
They have to have a driver's license or identification.
That's what I brought up the last time, that there needs to be. I'm running it from Jared and that has to be how it is. On some legal document, I can't just call and say, hey, I'm, I need water to Jared's property.
Right.
Can you make one comment on that? No, on this interesting scenario that we just had with the $1,300?
Was there three people living under one roof that had bad debt with the city?
Yeah, but it was, yeah. That was a whole, but the interesting, the most interesting part of that whole scenario was the last time that I spoke with Kathy, she said the driver's license number she was provided was fictitious. Okay, so my immediate response, because I know what I do, how I handle it, if I have somebody committing fraud, you know, I go to HUD and they go to the attorney general and so forth, but I said, are you going to press criminal proceedings, follow through that? And she said, no, we don't do that. So I guess my question is, if you have somebody that provided a fraudulent driver's license, how would you not pursue criminal proceedings?
Should they?
And then come back to me and say, now I'm responsible for this? That's not fair either. I mean, there's, there's more to look at in the whole scenario. I was just dumbfounded. I mean, I literally, I was, I'm a phone.
Not familiar with that camera.
Kathy, like, oh my God, blocking my phone number.
We'll follow up on that one.
Um, but that is, you know, that was a very interesting point I'm at, I'm like, wait a minute.
I'll be happy to look into that.
I'm feeling, you know. Um, one other thing, I know before you had asked me last week how it's handled in the other states that I have properties. One interesting note is they put a billing expense on, on the bills, a dollar and 31 cents for three months. How many bills do you spend out a month?
I think it's about 4,600, I believe.
So I mean, adding a dollar onto everybody's bill, not saying, not excusing any of this write-off, but adding a dollar onto everybody's bill, is anybody in this room honestly going to care if you add a dollar or 50 cents onto somebody's bill?
How the people?
For billing expense to upgrade.
We were talking about charging 50 cents for recycling and we had a lot of senior citizens here, in here going absolutely berserk on us. So yes, adding a dollar, we're going to hear all about.
Well, even if it's 50 cents, about $2,300 a month and to be.
What, to cover, to cover your guys' businesses' expenses?
Not for that. I'm saying that you're talking about upgrading your accounting system and doing this infrastructure and all these different things. You know, I think there's a lot of people in marketing complaining about 50 cents, but you're saying you're going to build a new water facility and upgrade accounting.
It's happening what I didn't want to happen, we're having too much bannering back and forth here. I'm going to bring the discussion to a close. We are working to try to address a lot of your concerns, okay? It's going to be a give-and-take thing. We're not going to be able to do everything you're asking of us, but everything you've asked is reasonable and we'll look at it and we'll do it if we can. The first, first thing I know what we will likely do, we haven't voted on it or passed an ordinance, I don't, but we'll likely, you know, our original ordinance that we did two readings on was going to put it in your name only and not the, not the tenant, okay? I think we've already conceded the fact that we want to rewrite the ordinance so that it can be in either the owner or the tenant's name, okay? That's the first give we're giving back, okay? We want to give more, but we don't know what we can do. And we'll continue to work on it. Hopefully, two weeks from tonight, we'll be able to introduce a totally different ordinance. In the meantime, I have email addresses and I might be able to send an email out to all of you that are here to kind of keep you in the loop, if that would help, so.
Can I have, I've got more questions.
Are they really necessary?
Well, as far as like how long it takes to write an ordinance.
Well, as far as like, how long it takes to write an ordinance?
It depends on what direction I'm given. Um, I'll, I'll try to have it ready in two weeks.
Well, no, that's what I was looking at, as far as if you can do something and implement something without writing an ordinance, okay, come back in a year and it's isn't working, so we can't write an ordinance after ordinance?
No, we have to do it by ordinance. We don't have a choice about that, okay? Um, I think it will be monitored, because if it doesn't solve the problem, then the council will revisit it.
And now, on the bill, could you put on the front or something for a couple of months that you take credit cards or something? Because that's not on there either.
It's on the back, I believe.
People that maybe aren't paying, maybe they'll use their credit card to pay.
I don't know, I can look into it. You say, on the bill, it's off, or on the envelope?
No, on the bill.
On the bill.
You take credit cards, or you can pay online, or...
I think it's on back of the bill.
The credit card is not, that you take credit cards, you know.
It's not on there anywhere, okay? We buy those thousands and thousands at a time, and I believe that this batch that we have now is probably gonna be the last batch, and we're probably gonna be changing what your bill, the bill's gonna look very similar, but it's gonna come on kind of a postcard thing. It won't even be in an envelope, okay? It'll be on a postcard. And, but that's, you know, probably you're done, you're, the road, because we have, we order X amount of envelopes and X amount of the invoices all at one time, so whether or not that'll get done, Jared, but it is a good point, that they can pay by credit card, so. All right.
One more time, this is Daryl. I just, I just wanna make sure, um, part of the infrastructure is also software. I know we go down the road and always think that the, the pipes, you think there's a ground, but infrastructure is also in software, and the building software that you use. So, as a, as a whole, we need to remember that.
I think I mentioned that, that we're...
You did. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if we're losing twenty-five thousand dollars a year in write-offs, I would rather invest that twenty-five thousand dollars in new software, so, I'm hearing you, Daryl. All right. Comments from the council now? Uh, I guess where we're at is the fact that if you're in agreement with, with what we discussed, be it via email and, um, this evening in my statement, then I think what we would look for would be a motion to table the ordinance again tonight, and then when we reconvene in two weeks, we would likely, uh, ask that ordinance two thousand fifteen, two thousand seventeen dash fifteen be stripped, and then reintroduce a new ordinance, so. So do you wanna table that, then discuss, or discuss then table? Discuss first. Before you table. Okay. First of all, thank you all for coming. I've had personal conversations with many of you in the room, and some that aren't here as well. Things I hadn't thought of, I'm not in the rental business, so Jared Lengrick and Candy Fleming and Steve Cre, um, Bill Wittwright, several others have contacted me personally. We do appreciate your thought and feedback. From a business standpoint, we can't keep losing twenty-five thousand a year. We're not looking to, to collect any of that back owed money. It's changing some of our policies moving forward. I think it's apparent in the last meeting, this meeting, that we need to do a better job as a city communicating with you. We need to do a better job finding out who owns what in the city, and we're looking, again, uh, software upgrades, that's the first place Kevin went. Is there a way to simply upgrade our software? Do we need a new software to better monitor? And I think, I'm not prepared at all to pass something bad, I wanna pass something that works for the city and for landlords. Thank you, Matt. Other comments?
Just simply concur with what Matt just said. Um, we don't want to push out something that's not going to work, and we need to step back and listen and investigate, which has been thoroughly explained this evening, I think very well, and then taking that information, new information, and making good decisions in the future.
But we also have to remember, we have two ladies that work up front at City Hall collecting this bill, and Bluffton has four. We don't want four. We wanna do something that works within the structure that we have, if possible, so. Okay. A motion? I'd make a motion to table this ordinance again, until we can have a better understanding of what we wanna introduce in a new ordinance.
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second to table ordinance two thousand seventeen dash fifteen this evening, and, uh, take it back up at our next council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Thank you, and thank you all for coming and your comments, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Um, next on the agenda is our ordinance to approve our two-year CEDAT plan for the fiscal years two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. Excuse me? Um, go to the, go to our, I don't have my card with me, but, go to the city webpage, it's on there. Google City of Decatur. Yes, uh, all right, Phyllis, I have it here somewhere. Right here it is. Uh, each, every other year, we have to do a two-year capital improvement plan for the City of Decatur, and... This evening, we have an ordinance for the years two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. The one that we're in right now for sixteen and seventeen had a, a total of one million dollars in it, and it was split over two years, okay, sixteen and seventeen. Uh, the years eighteen and nineteen has one million two hundred thousand, so it's two hundred thousand more. Yeah, this is our CEDAT plan. Uh, in this plan, Phyllis, I suppose I should read these, how it's broken down, uh, out of the one million two hundred thousand, eighty-five thousand dollars of it is for FEMA pre-disaster mitigation over the next two years for buy, flood buyouts. Uh, ninety thousand, or thirteen percent of our CEDAT distribution goes to Adams County Economic Development Corporation, and that's a, that's just a given, that's an annual contract we have, that, uh, that ninety thousand will go to Adams County Economic Development.
Who's in charge of sending that?
Uh, they invoice us, and Phyllis pays it.
No, I mean, is that something...
Is that ever renegotiated?
Or where is that money?
Percentage.
It's a percentage?
Based on population. Burn pays a percent, Monroe pays a percent, Geneva, and we pay the biggest. And county, county pays the best. And the county pays the best.
And that percentage is determined at what level?
What do you mean? It's population-based, isn't it?
The thirteen percent? How does it derive a thirteen percent?
Yeah, yeah.
It's been, uh, for years, and I think that, I am not sure how they came up with that. I'm guessing it's probably how it's, um, how they did the...
It's population.
Is it population, or is it true?
Yes. Population of Decatur, Adams County, I think Adams County's thirty-eight percent of the population, Decatur's the second largest, so it's...
So it's kinda like a tax...
But that ultimately is set up by the state, and how that...
No, it was, it was divided up amongst county, or throughout Adams County, that's how we do connect to careers funding, that's how we ask for their city, it's basically the same.
Formula. Formula, it's percentage of population and county compared to cities, meaning...
I understand that.
Decatur, Burn. Ninety thousand is our share. You're wondering what they do with all their money, that's your question.
I was just wondering if, where the ninety thousand goes, I mean, I'd like to see where they're using our ninety thousand dollars worth of economic development for. I've never seen a report on that.
Well, they were at our meeting...
He was here in...
Two meetings ago, yeah.
Told me how he was hiring somebody else, but that all that's worth...
They do.
Mayor sits on that board, he's not...
There's a housing study that was done between Adams and Wells County that he debriefed everybody on. The funding covers staffing, for one, it covers the administration of the revolving loan funds that they have through the EDC. So, uh, and it, it covers promotional things for, uh, you know, when he gets, sends out information related to economic development opportunities within the county, uh, he contacts different site selectors, you know, material is sent to different shows, yeah.
Regional development, RDA. And the mayor of Decatur, the mayor of Burn, so... Craig Kuschel, a member of the largest...
Oh, is he that?
A member of the largest municipality in the county, from their city council also serves, so Craig is on that board as well. Uh, we meet monthly. It's the, the mayors, there's someone from the town of Monroe, someone from Geneva, uh, the three utility providers all have representation, the school board has representation.
Industry.
Industry has representation. It's finance.
And it's, I mean, the large part of it, Tyler, is covering, covering...
The revolving loans.
Cost of employment, right.
Probably, yeah. Office.
And it's pretty lean budget in terms of what they operate on.
Tim's their attorney.
Sorry.
His fees.
Now, a lot of my fees are paid by applicants on revolving loan funds, so...
Sorry, Tim. Thanks for bringing that to our attention. I think that's worth, it's a good discussion.
Do they have a report?
They, they report to us.
Makes good sense, we need to know.
I mean, but an annual report that they...
Google the, what, the webpage.
It would be on there.
Get some information there.
I've been there.
Yeah, not much. Um, okay, so ninety thousand to Adams County Economic Development. Uh, a hundred thousand dollars to City Sidewalk Program, fifty thousand a year, seven hundred thousand to capital improvement projects, three hundred fifty thousand dollars per year. And then what's left over out of that is two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, and that's for promotional development of economic development projects, including but not limited to economic incentives, acquisition of real estate, and/or infrastructure improvements. And this past year, Phyllis gave me a list of what was on that, and this is the list. It's, I mean, there's a whole lot of things that come out of that, that, that leftover portion. Uh, we, I guess it was, it's been a few months ago, and someone from Greater Decatur, who's your Greg Kitson, made some suggestions of where we set money aside. The two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that we set aside in two thousand eighteen for Hannah Nutman, that would be coming out of that seven hundred thousand total, or, that's two hundred and fifty thousand of the three hundred fifty thousand dollars that we've set aside for two, two thousand eighteen, okay? Uh, Greater Decatur met, um, last night, and there's, there's a very good chance that Greater Decatur will be back and ask us to set aside another two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the year two thousand nineteen, because that project is gonna be a very expensive project. So, uh, we'll get to that likely at the next meeting. So anyhow, what I need is, uh, I guess that's all of it, right, Phyllis? Yep. A motion to introduce, and Wiley's left, so, uh, was connect to careers involved in that one too? I know we still got another year to pay up on that one. It's not on here, is it? It's part of the CEDAT, isn't it?
It, it's part of this two hundred and twenty-five promotional development of economic development.
Development, yeah.
Projects.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's on this long list here. So, somebody else wanna take a stab at introducing an ordinance here? What's the number of this, Phyllis?
Uh, nineteen.
Two thousand seventeen dash nineteen. Does it, we need to have it on, is it three readings and all that stuff too? Do we do all three tonight?
You can suspend the rules if you're prepared to, otherwise you table it until your nineteenth meeting.
I think it's kinda, uh, clean and pretty clear-cut, really. It's okay, you guys, go ahead.
What is it, what's it called?
Uh, ordinance, two thousand seventeen dash nineteen.
Uh, ordinance two thousand seventeen dash nineteen, why do you...
What is it called?
On its first reading?
Introduce it.
Introduce it, on its first reading in short title?
Yep.
Only?
Yep. Have a motion to introduce ordinance two thousand seventeen. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance two thousand seventeen dash nineteen in its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Tim?
Ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash nineteen, short title, capital improvement plan for the City of Decatur for calendar years two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen.
And you wanna make a motion?
Make a motion that we pass ordinance two thousand seventeen dash nineteen on its proceeded funding in its first reading.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second by Scott over here. Uh, to pass ordinance two thousand seventeen dash nineteen on its first reading would have roll call vote.
Craig Kuschel.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fuloncamp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes. And Wiley's, had to take a break.
Wiley, that's...
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, place, place, uh, motion, or, uh, ordinance two thousand seventeen dash nineteen on its second reading proceeded funding.
By short title only.
By short title only. That's the most important part.
I better put that in short title.
Second.
And a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash nineteen, short title, capital improvement plan for the City of Decatur for calendar years two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen.
Make a motion that we pass two thousand, uh, ordinance two thousand seventeen dash nineteen on its second reading in short title, succeed of funding.
A motion and a second to pass ordinance two thousand seventeen dash nineteen, but have roll call vote.
Craig Kuschel.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fuloncamp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes. I make a motion that we table...
Nope.
Oh, you know...
Suspend the rules.
Oh, suspend the rules? You wanna pass it?
Adopt it on third, final, anything.
Okay. I make a motion that we suspend the rules and pass, uh, ordinance two thousand seventeen dash nineteen on its third reading in short title.
Second.
An ordinance and a second to place ordinance two thousand seventeen dash nineteen in its third reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same? Tim?
Ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash nineteen, short title, capital improvement plan for the City of Decatur for calendar years two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen.
Make a motion that we adopt ordinance two thousand seventeen dash nineteen in its third reading.
In its third reading.
Second. A motion and a second for adoption of ordinance two thousand seventeen dash nineteen on its third reading. Phyllis, would I have a roll call vote?
Craig Kuschel.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulon-Camp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes. Ordinance 2017-19 has been adopted. Give me a minute to sign this. Make it go away. For now. I can sign them tomorrow. Okay, thank you, everyone. Did that. Craig, I think, you have a concert series event form? Somebody has that?
I have.
Phyllis has that.
It's summer.
You believe that? We're thinking summertime already here, folks.
Greg's on the ball.
Well, there's a reason we did that.
You think?
Yep. Craig, you want to talk about this?
Yeah, last year we had, well, two years ago, we had five summer, uh, summer concert series, or summer concerts, on Thursday night, first and third Thursday night. And last year, we had six of them. I think it was well-attended. It followed the farmer's market. This year, we're going to open up, hopefully have the Madison Street Plaza open by beginning of June, et cetera, et cetera. And this year, I've got sponsors for probably, well, quite about half right now, and I need to close up the rest of them. But I would like to have eight, eight concerts this season, and go the first and third Thursday, June, July, August, and then run it into September. If we need lighting, I've already touched base with the EMA. Did you remember, if you guys saw that big light that they put up in the courthouse on the east side during Californian Parade, so we can have use of that at any time, so. That's, I'm asking for your approval. Same map layout as we did last year, where we can have brews between the bricks if we, if that would be okay and acceptable. Basically, it's the same layout as we had last year. Usually run from about 5:00. We'd like to shut the streets down around, right around 5:00, and then, and then open them up back up about 9:00 to 9:30 when the shows are over.
And there's a good hope that, you know, once the plaza is done, that there could be something else taking place at the plaza before the concert, the, maybe the farmer's market moves back down here on Thursday night, and then you go up and get something to eat at the food vendors and.
Gain momentum, that's what we want.
The goal was here is to allow all of the ones that want to volunteer food from here locally, and if we get on the right, if we get on the right page, and I can get ahold of the vendors up in Fort Wayne, if we want to ask for those food trucks, too, we got to go now, so that's why I wanted to bring it up.
Sure. So I'm going to read the dates real quickly here. In June, it's the 7th and 21st. In July, it's the 5th and 19th. In August, the 2nd and 16th. In September, the 6th and 20th. So, having said that, would I have a motion, and I'm sure Craig's going to abstain from this.
Abstain from that.
So, have a motion to approve the event form.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Thank you. We have an ordinance, then, Tim, that has to do with wording on a building code.
Yeah.
Kurt has discovered.
Is this 20? Which, the ordinance number?
Yeah.
20?
2017-21.
Okay. What this is, is Kurt, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but Kurt attended a conference, and in that conference, it was brought up that there was a problem with the state, and I assume local municipalities as well, when they reviewed plans and specifications for issuing permits, in the past, it was marked approved. That caused problems from a liability perspective. The state changed its method of review, and they don't put approved any longer. Kurt, based on their recommendation, is recommending that the city likewise modify the language in its code to reference that the plans and specifications for, will be reviewed for conformance with the requirements in the code and other pertinent laws and ordinances. And if there's any violations noted, then the applicant will be notified of that. Otherwise, once the code-compliant plans have been submitted, then those cannot be changed unless they're, again, reviewed by the city, but it's not marked approved.
I think I gave the wrong order. Remember, rather prior one, because we didn't do the handicap parking one, it was 19. So the CEDAT one should have been 20. Sorry. I'm taking you back.
Oh, no. Did that change anything?
We had that.
Yeah, the handicap parking was 2019.
Yeah, we did not read that. Are we going to do that one?
Yeah, wait, I checked that off already. I have it on my.
Probably should do that before we do here.
Is it on its third and final reading?
Yep, it's just the final reading. So what we had for the two-year CEDAT plan, which was 2017-19, we need to make that 2017-20. And Tim, is there any legal course we need to do that?
It's a correction of a clerical error, so.
Okay.
It's, the adoption on all three readings of the two-year CEDAT plan should read ordinance number 2017-20.
Do I have a motion to make that approval?
Some of.
Second. Motion and a second. And so that takes care of 2017-20. And before we do the ordinance about the building code wording, I think we need to back up and take care of the third and final reading for ordinance 2017-19, which was the ordinance that we had for the handicap parking space at a residence.
Okay. So. Make a motion to.
Introduce.
Introduce 2017-19 on handicap parking on its first reading in short.
Third reading in short, on short title.
Thank you.
Second.
A motion and a second to place ordinance 2017-19 in its third reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Tim? Do you have that?
I do.
Not. 19.
I have it.
Okay, you have the, okay. Ordinance number 2017-19, short title, an ordinance to the common council of the City of Decatur which amends Chapter 78, Schedule 3, the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 as supplemented, to have a handicap parking space on Madison Street.
I make a motion to pass ordinance 2017-19 on its third reading by, on its third reading.
Second. I have an ordinance to pass ordinance 2017-19 on its third reading. Would I have a roll call vote, Phyllis?
Craig Kuschel.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulon-Camp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes. Ordinance 2017-19 has been adopted. Now we can move on to ordinance 2017-21, which will be the ordinance having to do with the wording. Tim, what you're saying is you're going to strike code as being approved.
So, basically, we're going to delete, we're going to take out the entire subsection E of Section 151.03, and we're going to substitute it with the language that Kurt recommended.
Okay. It's reviewed per something rather, yeah.
Okay, reviewed, it's not approved. Reviewed for compliance, it's not approved.
I don't have to say all that, but you want me to make an ordinance? I'll make a motion for ordinance 2017-20.
21.
My pardon, 21, on the review of.
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement on its first reading, short title only. Second. Have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2017-21 in its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Tim?
Ordinance 2017-21, short title, an ordinance to the common council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which amends Section 151.03, subsection E of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 as supplemented, regarding the review of plans and specifications filed with the city to obtain this building permit.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2017-21 on.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2017-21 in its first reading. Phyllis, would I have a roll call vote?
Craig Kuschel.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulon-Camp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Wiley, third. Yes. I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2017-21 on its second reading. I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. On its second reading by short title only.
Second. Have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2017-21 in its second reading by short title. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Tim?
Ordinance number 2017-21, short title, an ordinance to the common council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which amends Section 151.03, subsection E of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 as supplemented, regarding the review of plans and specifications filed with the city to obtain a building permit.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2017-21 on its second reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2017-21 in its second reading. Would I have a roll call vote?
Craig Kuschel.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulon-Camp.
Go ahead.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Wiley, third.
Yes. Okay, we'll make a motion to suspend the rules to pass ordinance 2017-21 on its third reading by short title only.
Second. Have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2017-21 in its third reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance 2017-21, short title, an ordinance to the common council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which amends Section 151.03, subsection E of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 as supplemented, regarding the review of plans and specifications filed with the city to obtain the building permit.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2017-21 on its third reading.
Second motion and a second to pass ordinance 2017-21. Roll call vote, please.
Craig Kuschel.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulon-Camp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Wiley, third.
Yes. Ordinance number 2017-21 has been adopted. That's everything on our agenda. Let's go back to the department heads. Mr. Mayhem, you got something?
Nothing today, thank you.
You're very welcome, Mike.
You're welcome.
Leonard? Chief, or soon-to-be chief, I mean. Fire chief?
Not a shot.
Kurt?
I'll be here 9:00.
Amen. Good to hear. Good to hear. Fellow hard is the people that's going to look at our furnace upstairs and tell us what we need to do to heat the upstairs. And once we know what we need to do and how much that's going to cost, then we can start the ball rolling toward renovating the upstairs. Good. Tom? Bill?
Melissa?
And?
Jeremy.
Not a chance.
Anything from the public? Anything from any council members?
Quick thing, if you don't mind.
Everybody got this investment celebration? We did that a couple of weeks ago on Wednesday. Stay special thanks to Wiley. Remembering, putting that together. There's some really cool achievements that we've had in the past three or four years. We had a really neat celebration, got a lot of folks together over at Vinnie's. Anything else you want to say?
And we had, we had about 20 people of our local property business owners downtown that came, and they were very enthusiastic. They wanted something like this to continue, a good way to communicate, also allow them to share ideas that they have as well. And then this flyer was just put together to kind of chronologically show what's happened, where we're at today, and some future things.
Cool. A side note there, I had a customer in over Thanksgiving. They hadn't been home for two years. They live in Chicago now. And his expression was, wow, there's a lot going on in Decatur. He's proud, you know? Very proud of what we're doing.
Good deal.
One other thing I was going to ask, if you don't mind. I've talked to a couple of people about drones, and I'd really like to get the opportunity to run it down Second Street. If there's any type of permission, I know, I'm not real sure about the FAA thing, but talk to the high school kids about editing a film, if we could get a drone or a pilot.
If a drone pilot's licensed, and they would be, I told you, two, the county has a drone, and Ethan Snyder can do it. He's licensed. And then Gus from.
Gus, two years.
He's another one that can do it, and probably either one of them would do it for free for us, so.
I just like to, I think it'd be cool to do, look out and get it edited. I like to get it on my kiosk out there. I think it'd be neat. So, what do you know? I'll give you support. I'll give you support.
Yeah, I'll remember that.
Let you know ahead. He wants to hide.[1531.52]